Where am I? Okay.
Morning, Phyllis.
Good morning, I can't find myself. Oh, there. Same place I've been. And now it's doing different.
I've been talking, it's on.
Exactly, yeah, that's the worst.
Yeah, Phyllis will let you know if your microphone's not on.
Yeah. She's our mic. And mic's on, good. How are you doing?
Pretty good. There's uh. Don't take any of the strong medicine, use a lot of Tylenol right now, but but that's that's all right. And I guess they say I'm doing all right, I don't know if they're lying to me or not when I go to physical physical therapy, but it's it's just gonna take some time.
Yeah, it's good to go, do whatever they say.
Yeah, pretty good, yeah, they do a good job, I I can't complain. I don't really like them sometimes when I go there, I'll tell you that.
Yeah, you're two weeks out now, right?
I'll be three weeks tomorrow.
Three weeks, okay.
Yeah, I thought about coming today, but I just don't know if I can sit that long.
Yeah.
So so if I block out today, if I get up and leave, you'll you'll know I'm going for a little bit of walk around the house here.
Yeah, I was speculating earlier, if you're if you were intentionally scheduled to avoid harvest, you know, if you're gonna be in the if you're gonna be in the in the truck right now.
Yeah. I'm not so sure I wouldn't rather be in the truck, to tell you the honest truth.
Yeah, yeah.
But yeah, it worked out pretty good, I I do all the if there's any paperwork to do, Joe throws it my way, so that's what we're doing.
I've got nine o'clock, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to define the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation with liberty and justice for all.
Mic's gonna lead us in lump jumping jacks, right?
Yeah.
Roll call.
Mochler.
Smith.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Manny.
Here.
Packard.
Here.
Any conflict of interest declarations?
None.
Hearing none, approve agenda?
Yeah, so I'm wondering if we can just do if anybody's got an update on the HVAC system. It's been quite a while.
We haven't yet, they haven't gotten back to us.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mochler.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Motion approved. Approve minutes.
Move to approve.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mochler.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Manny.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Motion passes, visitors to be heard. Damon Alvey, superintendent.
Yes, say good afternoon, or I guess good morning, thank you to the county commission, I just wanted to come in and thank you again for the partnerships and the support that you give our local school district, namely in the school resource project area, of course, you guys are responsible for helping Officer Armstrong be in our buildings, and our district greatly appreciates that, so this winter, I'm sure you guys will have your folks doing a great job of clearing roads for us and getting things ready as they always do as inclement weather comes, so just wanted to come and say thank you for that and you know, get everybody out to vote today, I was just coming from the election office down at the Armory, and we've had a good turnout this morning, so the school bond election's going on today for the elementary school, so just wanted to come and share that news and thank the commission for all their work and support.
Please vote.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, and good to meet you.
Yes, thank you. Are there any other visitors to be heard? Hearing none, Rod, is Rod on? Fuel quotes, it's just for the diesel, we just have diesel quotes, right Rod?
Yep. That's through the whole condish up.
Just like move to approve Volin Oil.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mochler.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Motion passes. Anything else Rod?
Nope, that's it for me.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Andy. Do we have Andy yet?
Yep, he's on mute.
On muted.
We're dealing with some issues here with lag, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Nicole, if you could, Lane's waiting to get in, he's we're having issues up here, I don't know if it's on your end or our end. So sorry, I I didn't hear the last little bit here.
Oh, we're just we're just moving on to you with your junk jail plumbing.
Okay. Um, I I think you should have it in your packet, we've got a quote from Hander Plumbing, I was just trying to open it, but the more I do with my computer, the more the lag happens, so I don't have it, but I believe it's about eighty five hundred dollars, and what that is, is to get us our jail fixtures working again. Most of the cells have some issue with either a toilet that doesn't flush, no hot water, no cold water, or no water at all. We we were really, really struggling when we were running full capacity, now that we're limited capacity due to short-term holds, we're really able to get in there and start working on some of these issues and and but the real the real hindrance we've had for the last several years is just getting a plumber to come in and work with us, and we haven't had any luck, but we got Hander Plumbing to come and and take a look at it, they assure us they'll get us taken care of. But with the the cost and then exceeding the amount I have in my budget, I didn't want to do it without some authorization because it might be become part of a supplement that we do later this year, we're gonna need to supplement as it is for the housing.
Andy, we lost you. He's gone.
But short-term holds, I think that we can we can live without that shower in the next year.
We lost you there for a little bit, Andy.
Okay.
Mainly about the shower, I think.
Okay, and the the shower, you can hear me again now?
Yeah.
Okay, there's a shower in one of our cell blocks that we stopped using a good year ago because it's had deteriorated so bad, and we weren't able to get a plumber to fix it, and we've got Hander looking into maybe some options for fixing that, which we want to use when we can start holding worker lease inmates again. And so that isn't part of this quote, this is just those commercial flush valves that go with these corrections toilet units. And so this would get all of our cells up and functioning again with plumbing that I think is necessary, if you're gonna house somebody in that cell even for a matter of a few hours, we should have plumbing in it. And so I I think it's important, but it's more than I have available.
Did we did we ask for more than one quote?
I've asked several plumbers to come in, give me a quote, and so I I could keep getting quotes if you want more quotes, but I can tell you that getting a plumber to come here and talk to us has been pretty difficult, and getting them to come back is is has been impossible.
Getting a getting a plumber to send you a quote is pretty tough for the last year or so, for sure, it a year or more. And so asking for quotes and getting quotes are two different things.
So so talking with Carrie on this, I believe this is gonna fall under, we can use the COVID money, we got that two point seven million since it's providing water.
Yeah.
It's, we're gonna get audited on it anyway.
Yeah.
And hopefully, hopefully they say that it qualifies. So we're we're kind of working, I mean, it's for water and sewer.
Yeah.
And this is providing getting fresh water, it's all part of the fixture, so.
Yeah. And I noticed that the price includes work already provided, so so they've had one of the guys in or ready to look at it and do a few repairs, or where are we at with that, Andy?
Gone again.
Yeah.
I would tend to say this is health and safety also.
Yeah.
Or if he's not coming in.
Thank you.
So I don't know if you've heard, I think after talking to Carrie, this should fall under that COVID money.
That's what I was hoping. So and and I'd asked her about that, and she said, well, that's up to the commissioners, if she said it's kind of used for whatever you deem it necessary, so.
But we're gonna get audited on it, so I mean, so just because we spend two point seven and say we we think it fits.
Yeah.
We still have to be.
So yeah, if you're comfortable with that, that'd be great, otherwise I thought if we could either not do it and or we could do it and then talk about it when we do a supplement later this year for, we're gonna need a supplement anyway. So that's a couple of options, so I could see about how plumbing and heating, if they would come down, I told Tiffany, just call one of the big Sioux Falls outfits, I give up on local plumbers, and and so she called Hander, they came down immediately, they gave us a quote immediately, and they said they could do the work, and they said, well, you have to wait till after Tuesday, because that's a lot of money, could have been a thousand dollars, I had that kind of money, so.
It it does, in your worksheet, it says that the price includes some work already provided, was that mainly just assessment?
Service call, yep.
Yeah.
The other plumbers at least didn't charge us to come and do nothing, the these folks said it would be a service call to come in and look at it, but they were gonna include that in this quote.
Yeah, Hander's working working in town pretty continuously right now, so it probably wouldn't, we'd probably at least share travel expenses from Sioux Falls with those guys, so.
Yeah.
Don't count on that.
Yeah, I know, I know. Yeah, I've actually, I've got a project going with it myself. You know, it's a hundred and fifty thousand bucks for the, my share is over at the new med school addition.
Yeah.
So I'm communicating with one of their guys pretty once a week or so.
Yeah, you know, it's just kind of thing, we just have to go with them bigger companies, I think one of the problems we're having with our local plumbers is it's a small job that's unusual, that they don't have the parts on hand, they have to essentially teach themselves how to do this work, and and then probably not do it again in, you know, a long time. And meanwhile, at the same time, they've got plenty of work and plenty of construction, and it's just not a priority, and we just haven't had any luck, so that's why it's the way it is, because we just haven't been able to get somebody to come and fix it, it hasn't been lack of funds, it hasn't been a lack of desire, it's been a lack of plumbers.
Yeah, well, it sounds like something we need to get done right away, so I don't know, what kind of motion do we need here? We need move move to approve.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mochler.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Motion passes. Anything else, Andy?
No, I I don't think so, I'll for a bit, so I I just have an issues upstairs, one thing I was gonna mention on that quote, it says, I think, it says ten Met Craft units, three of them are acorn, we corrected them on that, they said not a problem, same parts of works.
Goes for the record. Thank you. Is Lauren on? Okay, I'm gonna give an update then on the property complaint from Mike Gobel, so next Tuesday, Matt Taggart will be in. He's fire marshal. He's gonna walk us through the steps, and I thought it'd be handy if Lexi was here too then, so. It's a lot of be next Tuesday. I'll give Lauren a call, see if she can get on.
Weird.
Well, we've moved so far along so fast that we're gonna have to take a recess until Lauren gets her, because we can't do Drew until nine forty-five.
Yeah.
So we're gonna be in recess for till nine thirty.
You that way.
We're back in session, we're gonna start with Lauren.
I'm gonna start with my quarterly report. I have July, August, September, and part of October on here, so it's been a lot of summer events and fair, state fair, getting ready for all of those events, that sort of thing, and I included some pictures on here. The fair overall went really well, I thought, we were down in a lot of project areas, I think it's just because everybody's still bouncing back from the COVID year, except for poultry, which we had double the numbers of our chickens, I don't know why, but that was really nice to see. And then on the back page, you can see some of the state events that our youth participated in, and then I included the top results from the state fair, so we had several kids who were overall champions, Emmett Knutson out here was reserve champion poultry overall, so that means second in the whole state, so that's really good for him. Several of them were reserved, Spencer Scatfield won senior sheep showmanship, so that was a nice placing as well. The other things, a couple of upcoming events there, I highlighted the one at the bottom, we are having recognition event on November fourteenth at two o'clock PM, and I usually invite the commissioners, so if that is something you're interested in, please join us. That's pretty much all I have for my quarterly report, the next thing was, I finally got bids. I can refresh your memory, we had some water damage in the back conference room, that happened before COVID, and then because of that, it just never got fixed, and then early this spring, Raven found termites in the wall behind her desk, and then those have since been treated, so two to three months for those to die. I haven't seen any activity for termites there lately, but then, you know, getting past the fair and state fair, so now is kind of a good time for us to be ripping things up if we need to. I got three bids for you here, one from Keith Burkhardt, one from Tom Taggart, and I handed you guys one from AMS this morning, because he just came and gave that to me right before I came here. I think Tom Taggart's bid here, he came and gave this one directly to Carrie, so I don't know a ton of details about this. I don't believe, if I look at both Tom and Keith's bid, it does not include paint. And AMS included paint for the sheet rock, they included, he told me a dumpster, because they're probably going to need to pull away a bunch of material, he said.
Does anybody have a copy of those other two?
I don't.
No, I sent these with my packet to Carrie last week. You want me to pass them out? I I just have one copy of each.
Yeah.
Yeah, I missed that too, I think.
Can you read off of the codes R?
Yeah, so we got Tom Taggart for thirty five hundred dollars. Got Keith Burkhardt for twelve thousand four hundred and ten. And we have AMS for eighteen thousand five twenty-three.
Are there differences in what they cover?
I don't know why Tom's bid is so low, when they came to do their estimates, I mean, I felt like Tom did a good job, I just don't, I don't know how he came up with that.
Well, so so Tom's doesn't include electrical or paint, and the electrical on AMS is six thousand dollars.
And he said, he told me this morning, he didn't know if electrical would cost that much, he was just including it because he didn't know what they might have to rearrange when they go, when it's hard to say what they're gonna find behind the walls until they pull that all that old paneling off.
And Keith Burkhardt's doesn't does not include electrical either. And I don't think neither of them, well, Tom says it doesn't include paint, and I don't see on Keith's where.
I don't think his includes paint either.
No.
Well, I wonder if we shouldn't get back to Tom and have him include paint, and if he thinks there's electrical or not, I mean.
Paint and waste, the dumpster, paint, waste and dumpster, that's can be a other three to five hundred.
We need to find out, because that's a huge difference.
Yeah.
I'm I'm wondering if he's got, has he got material in at that thirty five hundred bucks?
Labor and materials.
Okay.
To remove termite damage, and we go, yeah, this is just sounds like this is just in Raven's office.
I don't know, because he took, he looked at everything, he took measurements, so I don't know why he would have not included all of that.
Do you mind getting back to both of them?
Yeah, I can do that.
Clarifying.
To Tom and Keith?
I would, yeah.
Yeah.
And then.
Use AMS is a kind of a a worksheet, I'm not worksheet, but at least a an itemized, what sort of things ought to be itemized? Get aphasia here. And ask him to have a more comprehensive and and a more broken down.
No, they seem pretty gentle.
We like his bid, we just want to make sure that it's comparable.
Okay.
Well, we know we're gonna need the electrical, and it needs to be painted.
Correct, yeah. And if we gotta add those in ourselves, you know, if we gotta hire an electrician ourselves, you know, that then it's gonna all be coordinated with him anyway.
Right.
And if if the AMS has six thousand in there as an estimate, I I'm not sure that should be included in in the bid or as a comparison.
Well, I think we should, I think we should get back to get back to AMS also, call them and get that electrical number narrowed down. Because they they kind of guestimated the six thousand dollars.
Correct.
And I would hate to have them lose out. Because we're making the other two get a solid number, and we're gonna take their estimate, so.
Yeah.
Give them.
Possibly do the electric as an asterisk add-on, you know, not included in the actual bid.
I've had trouble getting electrical bids lately too, it's been just like pulling teeth to get those guys to come and look.
But but they can't, they can't do the job without the electrician.
Correct.
Right.
They're gonna have to coordinate it somehow.
Yeah, torn out, framed, and then electrical come in and then finish after that.
Yeah, and AMS also includes repairs to the exterior facade, and it's unclear whether the other two bids do. And yeah.
Right, it's not written in there, I know that they both went outside and looked at it, but why it's not written, I don't.
Yeah, so I think itemization would help enormously, because we don't know what the other two exactly are including.
AMS owns their own lumberyard now, so.
Yep. So any other questions, Lauren?
Nope, I will do that and let you guys know.
Anything else for Lauren?
Yeah, might might even help to give all three bidders a list of, you know, of what we're looking for, kind of a request for proposal on these bases, so that we get, you know, so we want them to include, you know, painting, we want, yeah, so so specify precisely what we're asking them to bid on, that'd help.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thanks.
Yep.
Extra work, but hopefully we'll get it done for you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
So we still got some time to kill, Drew.
Yep, yeah.
We're gonna take a five-minute recess.
More recess than meeting.
So close. Another area, it's different than what we have, maybe, like they're closer to Colorado and Wyoming.
Yeah, I I think we're just gonna see so many more solar installations over the next ten years, well, yeah, and I I think I think federal law is gonna change too. And yeah, and I I think there'll be more subsidies, and when that happens, you'll, you know, when California created more subsidies, man, all of a sudden, there were wind farms everywhere.
And I know there's solar farms in Missouri have raised zoning issues where there've been been protests against solar farms in Missouri.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So we're back in session.
Yep.
And we're gonna start with Drew on Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-seven, Platts of Tracks, one, two, and three, in the Wetmore Edition, Wetmore Peterson Edition, in the Northwest Quarter, Township eight ninety-four fifty-two, Pleasant Valley.
Yeah, just it like it's would be normally a minor plat, but surveyor included all the signature blocks for the commission, so ramped up the commission process. Size conforms, it sounded like they're cleaning up some legal descriptions from an old meets and bounds legal description, so.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mochler.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Manning. Manning.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Motion passes. And that's the only one, right, Drew?
Yep.
Anybody have anything else for Drew? Do we have a meeting next week?
Tuesday night by fifteen.
Tuesday, five fifteen.
Yep. That's good for the conference plan. The. Campground ordinance and the medical marijuana.
Depending on how long it takes, off to see. Okay, I'll let you know. Does anybody have nothing else for Drew? Does anybody have anything else? That's not on. It's gotta be on the agenda, I guess, but. Worked at the end of the agenda.
Well, then I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those roll call.
Mochler.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks.
Heal up, Mike.
All do.
They're interesting.
Replacement.